Let's open the planning board meeting for June 8th of 2021. Meetings being conducted Zoom pursuant to the governor's order that is still in effect. This meeting is being recorded. And will be available on the website for people to listen to. If you are recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Is anybody recording this?
No.
All right, seven o'clock, town planners report. John, your inaugural address.
Thanks, Mike. Much appreciated. And I should start by saying I appreciate the warm welcome I've received from four members, town staff and stopping by the office. Okay, I did receive an inquiry from Concerned Citizen resides on near the former VFW on Point Grove Road regarding some recent tree clearing that's taken place. That two states. Circled back with her and but no, there was nothing received in terms of activity, but that no apparent violation had taken place. We responded to a request for information submitted to the town for meeting minutes related to Sunnyside Ranch Estates. The decision for the defendant subdivision and releases from a covenant in lieu of bond for infrastructure improvements over there. Here's the one. Plenty board members need to complete the 2021 conflict of interest assessments and certifications by July 30. I've got copies packets in the office and I'll distribute that information in an email as well. And lastly, we did receive a patient renewal permit application for Hudson Drive on behalf of Tilicon Minerals. That's about it between that and a lot of getting up to speed.
Sounds good. All right. Seven oh five public comments. Does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda to be discussed? Okay. Let's look at the minutes while we're waiting a few minutes to get to the seven ten hearing. Why don't folks who are on the call, if you could just go to the chat and sign in with your name and address, so it'll be like a sign in sheet, basically. That'd be great. And if you could, you know, just try to mute yourself when you're not speaking, just so that there's no background noise or anything when when other folks are speaking, that'd be great. All right. Minutes has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
Marcus, you did, right? I remember, I think.
Yes, Megan made the changes that I requested, so I'm satisfied with them.
Okay, Jessica, have you had a chance to?
I'm looking over Marcus's edits right at the moment.
Okay. We got a few minutes, so let me know if there's anything that needs to get changed.
Michael, while we have some time here, I stopped in planning board office and talked to John briefly about we're going to be needing to request for proposals coming out of town meeting with the $25,000 for the housing plan and $25,000 for the master plan. So I said I would draft something up on that. But John is probably going to have to run that up the flagpole. I don't know if it goes by Carl. How how we issue requests for proposals, but we want to probably be ready. So when July 1st comes, we can put those out, or maybe we can put them out before July 1st. I don't know what the rules are.
All right, let me just trying to get the last minute things together. We got in the email today.
The minutes are all set.
Perfect. Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps make a motion to accept the minutes of May 25, 2021.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thorpe, and I.
All right. So that is all set. All right, so now we can go to the hearing. Hold on one second. Let me just pull up the notice. Okay. All right, so 7:10 PM parcel 21 Sodom Mountain Road special permit notice of public hearing Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 7:10 PM. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A Section 11 that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, 2021 at 7:10 PM via Zoom on an application of Daniel Dumay for a special permit site plan approval storm water management permit for the property located at parcel 21 Sodom Mountain Roads owned as District AC. The property is shown on the Sessors Map 104 parcel 21. Zoom information is given. The applicant proposes to construct a single family home in accordance with the Code of Zoning by law 25 Sections 9, 10, and 11. Application and the plan may be contacted town planner at his email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and manner designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. All right, so let's see here. Let me just close that out. All right, so who's here for the applicant?
Jessica Allen from Arlevic Associates.
Hi, Jessica. How are you?
I'm well. How are you tonight, sir?
I am good. All right, so let me, I'm assuming you need a share screen.
That is correct.
So let me, I don't think I've set that up yet. Give me a minute. All right, so you should be able to. So go right ahead.
Are you able to see the plans?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Um, hello, everybody. My name is Jessica Allen. I'm with Arlevic Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant who is here behalf of the planning board requesting a special permit to build a single family house in the agricultural conservation district. As you know, that's a use that requires a special permit for that district. This this application is also been filed with the Conservation Commission and for a variance with the ZBA. So we are have parallel tracks with other municipal boards for this project as well. But what we're here tonight in front of the board is to discuss specifically the use. So to give you a sense of the project, the entire parcel is about a three acre parcel. The proposed use is to put to install a gravel driveway up into this proposed house. There is some the entirety of the project is located within the riverfront area. So we have this small brook here which runs along the site. You'll see there's a 50 foot wetland buffer here. We have the inner riparian location here. So you can see because of the location of the of the house on this piece of the property, it does need to go to conservation. The reason that it is being cited on the agriculture conservation portion of the parcel rather than in the the residential 40 district is that this is completely wetland. So it's difficult to build in this area. This is already a meadow area. It's already been disturbed. There is an existing accessway for there's an old structure that has been here for quite some time. And this would be demoed as part of the project. The project, I'm just going to zoom in real quick here. Better view of the footprint of the house. We do have the proposed building envelope here. You'll see that in addition to the driveway, this is below ground driveway entry, first floor, about 10 feet up from the from the garage area. We have pathways and walkways up to this area. Because of the grading in this location, there are some retaining walls, some retaining walls here as well. There's existing stone walls that will remain and not be removed. Stormwater will be directed towards this proposed rain garden for stormwater control. There is a yard drain that's part of the of the of the rain garden that's connected to a piping system and then the it will daylight straight here. In addition, there is a pretty low stream here, but we will be installing the proposing to install a a box, open box culvert to grant access to the driveway. My, come. So the reason for the request for the for the variance, just for your information, is that the building inspector has ruled that this is the front property line. So we are required to have a 75 foot setback from the front property line. You'll see the measurement from here that's 65 feet, which is to the proposed building envelope. So it runs from there to there, and that is our nature of the request before the ZBA. As you see, because of the amount of work that is being proposed within the conservation commissions jurisdictional areas, the project has gone to them. They've had two public hearings on the proposed project as such. And there is a site visit scheduled tomorrow for the Conservation Commission at nine o'clock. That is a general summary. I'm happy to walk through, you know, the special permit criteria, but I think I can leave that to the board to walk through that and ask any questions that they might have with the proposed project.
Okay. Let me go through the comments that we've received from the board here. Give me one minute.
I don't know.
Okay, so first from DPW.
It won't last long.
Comments or not, but so I'll go through them. And if we need to discuss them, we can.
That'd be great. We have not seen them yet.
Okay, so DPW from Randy Brown, I reviewed the plans for Sodom Mountain Road dated 5/3/2021 as prepared by Arlevic Associates and provide the following comments. One, the town maintains Sodom Mountain Road only up to the gate, which is just beyond the applicant's proposed driveway. If the applicant proposes any modifications to the abandoned roadway, such as to control drainage, they should coordinate with the Public Works Department. The cost of any improvement should be borne by the applicant. Two, the applicant shall secure a driveway permit from the Public Works Department prior to construction. So those are the only two comments from DPW. Fire Department has indicated their only concern, this is from Chief Anderson, is there is a weight limit on the culvert. Do you know whether?
That's a good question. Let me see if there's any information. This is the detail for the culvert. I don't know the weight limit, but I can certainly find out from the engineers at RLA.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, you know, fire is going to want to know that they can get their vehicles up there without any issues, so. All right, and then police, they have no issues with the proposal, so they have no specific comments. John or Meg, I think that's everything unless you guys know of one that I missed that has come in.
No, that's it, Mike.
Okay. So board members, anybody have any comments?
Yeah, Mike, could I see a map of where Loomis Street is on?
Jessica, are you able to get back to where the? Oh, hold on.
To get where Sodom Street but Loomis Street.
I do have the GIS pulled up. Let me see if I can get that for you very quickly.
Thank you.
I think it's just up, Dick, just from, I mean, it's it's
I know where it is. I walk by it every day.
Well, I mean, it's just from the, you know, it's not far. It's just it's where that corner is.
Right, so the so the
It's just below Bunny Hill.
So it's 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 proposed to be coming off of right off this bend area here, and here's Loomis. So I could use the fancy fancy measuring tool if you'd like and do a quick measurement. Okay.
So the abandoned road, who who made it? Is that a legal abandoned road or just because they don't maintain it because that comes out to Granville?
It's my understanding that it's a it's a paper way. So it's a it's a public way. It's just not constructed. So it ends at the gate. The gate is noted, let's see. On the plans, it's right. If I stop sharing this and go back to the plans for a sec, I can show you where the gate is.
I mean, is the gate put in by the town or by some homeowners, a couple homeowners up in that street or you know what?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Because years ago, you used to be able to drive that road all the way to Granville. Actually come out on Sodom Street in Granville, Mass. Where it's called Sodom and Cross.
So the gate, my understanding is the gate is right about here.
Okay, who's gate is it? Is that the town gate or the homeowner's gate?
Let me just, Randy, are you, if you're on the call and you want to hop in and you know the answer, please feel free to.
Mike, can you see me?
I can, yep.
Okay, yeah, so so there is a gate at the at a Sodom Mountain Road there just past that driveway. That is a town gate. We do maintain that. That as as Dick noted, Sodom Mountain Road used to continue all the way through to Granville. But that section of the road has been discontinued. I don't know how how long ago, but it's been several decades since that road's been discontinued. And the gate was installed beyond.
So it's legally discontinued then. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Okay. Any other questions from board members?
Marcus Phelps, Michael, under the bylaw 18511 for the single family residences. It's saying the Board of Health shall certify that the proposed private sewage and water systems have been designed to operate satisfactorily in relation to the particular characteristics of the soils and slopes in this district. So we should see something from the Board of Health related to their onsite septic and water supply.
Don't we usually just have a a line in there that they have to get all necessary approvals from the Board of Health or am I am I misremembering what we have in our?
This seems a little different. It says the Board of Health shall certify to the board. So we could put that in the condition, I guess, that they would provide a certification to us.
Is that so? It's just with the single families? I'm just trying to pull it up here.
Yes, it's I don't know that it would hold anything up. Long as they're, I'm expecting they would be on a well. With the wetlands, they might have plenty of water supply.
Yeah, so I think that can just be a a condition that we can put in there.
Okay, it would be a separate condition than just our general statement that we put in.
No, correct. You're right, Marcus. With the way it is, yeah, I think it has to be a separate condition. And then we should also probably just make sure, I don't know, John, if you've looked at this, or if Jessica, you can respond, but there's a condition in here in section 11 six about minimum lot height and area requirements are not less than those required in the R40 zone. So I don't I don't I just don't remember looking at the numbers on it or hearing the numbers.
So we do have on the plan under there's a zoning review chart. That is part of the plan set that shows that everything is met with the exception, as I mentioned before, that we're going for the variance for, which is the front yard. So there's a 75 foot requirement, but we have 65 proposed. So all of all of the dimensional requirements have been met.
Using the R40. Okay, perfect. All right. All right, any other board members have questions? All right, any public comments? I should say town officials first and and public comments. We'll put them group them together. No, okay. You know, Jessica, with these, my, you know, I think our inclination is to continue it over until there's final, a final plan, the coming out of conservation. Unless you see some reason not to, but, you know, and I know I was I listened to that part of the meeting last night, and I know they had a few little things that they were talking about. So I, you know, it's probably worth continuing this over. Just to make sure that there is a final plan that we're looking at.
Sure, and then I can I can confirm the weight limit on the culvert for the fire department as well.
Yep. Okay.
I do have a question if I could speak.
Yeah, just state your name and address first, please, if you could.
Yeah, Jason DeRozer at 53 South Loomis.
Yep.
Just just want to know what I guess effects would happen with the water level concerning because I am at the lowest part here. So I don't know if that's something that they would have to come around and figure out. That's what my biggest concern is right now.
What do you mean specifically?
Well, obviously, digging for a septic and all the, you know, the foundation and all that, just wondering what that's going to end up doing. You know, for me, I'm down at the base of the mountain there. So I just want to make sure I'm not having like a lake in my basement.
And that's
I got enough problems now with it, you know, so I just want to.
Yeah, so I mean, I would say you know, it's usually something that is going to be addressed in a couple ways, you know, conservation is looking more at the at the ultimate plan and what's going there. The building inspector is obviously going to have you know, put put conditions on the manner of construction. And so obviously, they're not going to, and there's a requirement that I believe that there's there's no forget the actual words used, but you know, there can't be a substantial change in the way that that the original, you know, water drainage exists right now, right? I mean, there can't be a substantial change from what exists now for the flow of water. So, you know, I think those get taken care of and certainly, you know, Jessica or John, feel free to speak up, but those get taken care of through the building inspector and through conservation is really the two primary things on this application where that'd be taken care of.
Right, there's no blasting or anything that they're going to be doing right on that as far as getting ledge or whatever. Anything that will affect the foundation.
That is not my understanding, but I can confirm on that. It's it's my understanding is that the the site really is being located in an area that has an existing meadow and that there's not a huge amount of demolition or tree removal that needs to happen in order to cite the house. And it's been cited on that location because it's a previously disturbed area.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Let's let me just pull up the June 29th here. Meg, you sent that to me this morning, right? There we go. Okay. Jessica, do you know when it's on for a conservation again? I don't remember writing that down last night. You're on mute, Jessica.
Sorry about that. I'm guessing it's probably two weeks from from last night. I can double check the RLA calendar, but my guess would be that's would be on the 21st. So hopefully, we can, you know, with the site walk tomorrow and, you know, I don't know if planning board members want to join on that site walk at 9:00 AM. But, you know, if we close out on the 21st with conservation, then we would be in front of you the following week.
Okay. So what I will do since I don't these are simply just sort of tying up things that, you know, I I think we could probably put it we'll say like 7:07, put it right before the disc off hearing and, you know, it shouldn't take very long, assuming that everything is finalized. Obviously, if it's not finalized, just let us know and we'll kick it off to the next meeting, but.
Okay, that sounds great. We'll put that in our calendar for 7:07 PM on June 29th.
Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to 7:07 PM on June 29th?
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Richard Ossinger, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Okay. Good, so that's all set. 7:20 PM, 1:15 Fred Jackson's special permit continued.
That is still us, our Levek Associates.
Yep.
So tonight for that project, we're going to request a continuance to the next meeting on the 29th. There are some minor revisions to the plan that need to be made based on comments from DEP. And we're still in the process of revising the plans, so we'd like to request a continuance for that hearing.
Okay. Any comment on that? Hearing none, I'll hear a Hearing none, I'll hear a let me just hold on, let me figure out. This this is Solix property, right?
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Mike, I do need to excuse myself.
From that, from that hearing, right? Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm in a butter.
Yep, so.
If the agenda on the 29th is getting jammed, I think we could be compatible to the following meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, how likely, I, I I think it probably makes more sense for you guys to put it on the next, the meeting after that.
When I spoke with the engineer today and asked him when he thought the plan revisions would be complete, he thought by the end of this week, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess here's, here's, I'll give you the choice frankly, which is, I could put it on later, but you're gonna be behind two probably reasonably length hearings. So, you know, the odds of and, and that's not including, you know, we could probably tuck you in between this and, and if Carvana goes to the next one, but, you know, so there's gonna be some decent length for that next one, so.
Sure, sounds like your agenda's getting pretty jammed up for the 29th. So, okay, let's, um, let's continue it then to the meeting after that, which would be are you, are you going on summer schedule in July?
Yeah, I don't, Meg, what's, did you, you, I think you texted me, what, what's the Ju- July meeting?
July 13.
Okay. So July 13th, is there anything on that meeting?
No.
Well, there you go, so 7:10, how about that?
Perfect.
All right, do I hear a motion to continue 115 Fred Jackson to July 13th at 7:10 PM?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
All right, that is all set.
Thank you so much.
Yep. 7:25, 220 Sheep pasture road A and R. Good evening. Uh, if you could just tell us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Chipley. Uh, my address is 55 Rowley Street in Agua. And I'm representing Our Lady of the Lakes Parish in Dice Springfield. I'm with Culver Realty Services. Yeah, our firm represents the diocese in real estate matters.
Okay. Are you gonna be sharing this screen, Ed?
You know, I'm to be perfectly honest with you, I haven't done a lot of this. So, um, I, I was hoping that you might have a plan. Oh, everybody's, everybody's in a different location.
Do we have an electronic version of it? Or no?
I can send, I, I've got one.
Mr. Chair, I've got one at my disposal.
Yeah, John, if you wanna, if you are able to share it, I just.
Great, I, I can explain what they're trying to do.
I'm looking to see if I have it, and I don't know if I do.
There we go.
Perfect, thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. What the parish and parish priest was hoping to do was, they're actually two different things. They wanted to create a bit more of a buffer in the rectory building at 2, 228 Sheep pasture road, that's the rectory, the garage and church building, that lot. They'd like to add from lot, what, what Ed Chaplin is describing is lot number two, or 228 pasture road. I think it's 10, 20 feet by 187, and add that to 228. And create a new lot that the resident residential building sits on. That, uh, this is an R 20 zone. And and particular plan needs they're just, it's just shy of the requirement, if I'm, if I'm looking at the right, yeah, I'm looking at the right zone. Setback is also, setback on the house at 220 is approximately 45 feet. The R 20 zone calls for 75, but that's kind of pre-existing non-conforming situation there. Setback, side yard, rear yard are all in compliance with, with the R 20 zone. So we're pressing approval of this modified plan.
All right, John, does it, you've taken a look at it, what's your thoughts on the, you know, complying with the A and R and any issues with it?
So in light of the modest deficiency in area shown on the plan, I wanted to give that some, some careful review. So I took a look at the, the A and R handbook for Massachusetts. In, in a nutshell, the A and R process doesn't define under zoning, or we're not supposed to interpret compliance with zoning as exhibited by the notes that are attached to that plan. I'm so really just looking, you know, is there access and proper frontage for the zone, and, and both of those comply. If I can pull from the handbook, a plan showing proposed lots with sufficient frontage and access, but showing some other zoning violation is entitled to endorsement that approval under subdivision control law is not required.
Okay, so you, so so that frontage doesn't matter?
I'm sorry?
Is that, hold on, let me just see, I'm trying to look at the
It has the frontage, it doesn't have the
Or the, yeah.
Area, doesn't have the 40,000 square feet.
Yep. There you go. All right, so
Mike, if you'd like, I can provide a little more language from that section of the A and R handbook.
Yeah, just read that to me again. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to run it through in my head here, as you're saying, and I just want to make sure that that's
Sure thing. Uh, let me actually just run back, I'll read that part first. All right, the quote that I grabbed there was a plan showing proposed lots with sufficient frontage and access, but showing some other zoning violation is entitled to endorsement that approval under subdivision control law is not required. And it'll take me a moment to look over to the screen. I'm gonna snip out a little quote here, Mike. Uh, enacting under section 81P, a planning board's judgment is confined to determining whether a plan shows a subdivision, nor can we say the recording of plan showing a zoning violation, as this one does. I'm sorry. Referring to case law, my case, conservational purpose, another recording of a plan such as the in this case, may be preliminary to intent of taking a variance or by abutting land that brings a lot of compliance, or even to sell the non-compliant lots in a bar and bring it into compliance. Any event, nothing that we say here in any way proves the enforcement of the zoning bylaws should the recording occur, excuse me, a plan eventuate in a violation. That was a citation in A and R handbook, Smalley versus Planning Board, Carwich, 1980.
So you can basically take properties and make them non- non-conforming? Is what?
But you can't, it has to have the frontage and access.
Right, as long as you have frontage and access, you can make them non-conforming.
That's correct. My, my interpretation of the who the cases cited in the, in our handbook indicate that, uh, the planning board's review is restricted just to frontage and access.
And what we're saying is that this is not a subdivision. Which it is not.
No, correct. I mean, yeah, I guess, yeah, no, that's fine. All right, all right. Any other? Anything else, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mike, this is Paul Gregoire, Board of Appeals.
How are you?
Oh, hanging in there. Nice warm evening. Uh, we looked at this when it first came up many months ago and discussed it with attorney Mark Begley. And he didn't see any problem with taking on this extra piece of land and move it over. So I just throw that in.
No, I appreciate that, and I, it's more just, we haven't had to deal with this, I guess, at least in my experience on the board. So I just had to kind of wrap my head around it for a minute, but it makes sense now that and it's good to know that Town Council has looked at it. Um, so, okay, perfect. All right, that's always, that's always refreshing to hear. Um, so, um, all right, any other questions or comments? All right. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will make a motion to endorse this A and R.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Ottinger, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay, so that is all set. We will get that signed, and you can arrange to, to get it picked up.
I'll talk to Megan about picking up the mylar so we can get it recorded.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your help on this. Good night.
You too. Um, 7:30 PM, lot AA, Two States Avenue, A and R. Uh, who is here on that A and R? Anyone? Uh, John, do you have a copy of the plan?
I do, just give me a moment.
It's probably a good time as we're getting closer to stuff here at the end that, to have if you haven't yet, sign in, please, with your name and address, just so we can have a sign-in sheet of everybody who is here. Oh, okay. Perfect. All right. Oh, so is this?
Mike, I'm happy to walk through if you want.
Uh, yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, uh, so this is the, the former VFW property. For showing Two States Avenue and Two States Road. The proposed land to be divided from it is a, a rear, I call it an open grassed area, shown here as lot AA. In this particular case, we have adequate frontage and area under the zone, uh, both within the parcel to be divided and, uh, with the remaining land of Frank Gorilla Enterprises LLC.
Okay, and this is coming off that front part, right? That's, you're taking off, they're taking off the back of it?
That's, that's correct. The, if you go from Funk Road, we are looking at rear acreage.
Yep. And I guess we haven't thought about this issue in a while, but with some of these Two States Road, or no, Two States Ave, I'm sorry, is 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 considered an approved town road, right? There's still not, some of those had a couple issues, I think, at some point, but I think they're all set now, isn't that right?
Is Randy Brown on? He could tell us.
Yeah, that's who I was just looking for.
Mike, I'm pulling my Sorry, I, I am here. I was at the outside here.
That's okay.
Can, uh, so Two States Avenue is considered a private road. The land that Two States Avenue sits on is owned by the VFW, and that has never really been broken off onto a public way. However, there have been properties that have been developed uh, off of Two States Avenue over the past few years, including, I think, one lot that did get an A and R through this board uh, for a very similar lot, that's, house that's under construction currently. That's, it's right next to this, this lot, that's in question.
Okay, which, and that's perfect. I appreciate you telling me that. Which, because that leads me to the next question, which is, I don't know if that's a requirement or not, um, with these A and Rs, I, I don't it sounds like, based on what John was just saying before, that it, it may not be. But I just couldn't remember whether we had dealt with that before, so thank you, Randy.
Yep.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
So, can we approve a lot that's not on a public road, not a private road? I mean, where's the frontage?
So, as, I'm just trying to pull up the GIS here. See what we have done in the past. Give me one minute.
Can we approve one way in the back from Norm's story a couple years ago?
We approved one that ran, it was, it's a, it's a very oddly shaped lot, is my memory, and I can't remember exactly what the address was of it.
But didn't tie into another road behind it?
That's what I, I thought they actually had to, to get the frontage is, is what I was trying to look back at, but
So Mike, if you're gonna be chiming in.
Yeah, go, please, go ahead.
Yeah, the lot that
Uh, hold on, we lost Randy there for a minute.
It's not being developed.
Uh, Randy, we lost you there, we didn't hear most of what you said.
Let me walk inside. Okay, so, uh, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yep.
All right, so the, the story, the, the lot that Norm Story bought and sold recently was, uh, the, the lot that's adjacent to this parcel. Uh, on the plan is to the left of it, uh, along the lake, and, uh, Norm Story did have several parcels that he pieced together, and he was able to create, create that one lot that was, that's And he was able to create, create that one lot that was currently under construction.
But did it have, it, it didn't only have frontage on Two States Ave, right? Wasn't, didn't he have to do that little? There's like a little narrow, you know, connection and it goes to something else?
Yeah, you're correct. There was, uh, he does have front, that, that lot did have frontage off of Grove Street. So the end of Grove Street, at least on paper, it goes past where the, the paved road is. And then there's a kind of a bow is out, old, like a big ball, almost like a cul-de-sac, which is all within the, you know, the right of way for Grove Street. But so that, that lot did have frontage off that, off of that, you know, will be considered right, right away.
Yep. I mean, John, you were just reading that language, right? I mean, when it's talking about frontage, it's not just simply the distance, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's frontage meaning on a, on a town way as well, right?
Uh, I was just digging in to see if I could put some tooth on that. Like, and you're right, that particular circumstance that we referenced for Chief Bachelor Road, I, I wouldn't want to directly apply that language here. Randy, do you know if Two States Avenue was in place when the subdivision control regulations went into place in Southwick? I think that might have been sixty-two.
I think that was in the early fifties, John. I would say nineteen fifty or fifty-one, and I'm not sure when Two States Avenue was built.
Thanks, Mike. How about if they had a waiver from from the VFW for that, if they get a waiver to use access road, would that work? Would that be part of their deed that they, that has to be right away provided?
Well.
It's almost like an estate lot, I mean, you know, as far as access.
That's not a bad idea, Dick. So I'd like to jump in here. So what I think happened was the, the entire parcel that the VFW resides on, it was, it was one big parcel that went all the way to the lake. And over time, the VFW sold individual parcels at the end that had lake frontage and granted those properties access to the property, you know, via this new, this Two States Road. So I haven't read any deeds of those properties on Two States Avenue, but I would suspect that there's probably language in those deeds that grants them right to utilize Two States Road to access their, their property. So if, I would imagine that a similar provision would be appropriate for this parcel approved.
Is two, are, are either of those approved town roads? Ever.
Two State, Two States Avenue and Two States Road, neither of them are approved.
Okay. So I mean, there's two, you know, there's two aspects of this, right? From what John was reading, there's, there's access and then there's frontage. You know? Yeah, I mean, you could do right aways or easements to, to get access. But the frontage one is what, I mean, frontage has to be frontage on a town way, I think. That's what we, I mean, I, I, that's what we required of Norm's stor- story, I think, with that property behind it. I mean, I think he had to move it over onto to touch his grove on just, I mean, it's like, whatever the frontage has to be, a hundred fifty, I think. I mean, I think he just has a hundred fifty over there.
Mike, can I chime in just a little?
Please.
And again, I love, as a non land use lawyer, I don't want to go too far in the weeds, but I'll read a little bit from the handbook here. Subdivision control law gives the planning board some discretion to determine the adequacy of a private way. As was noted in Hutchinson versus Plan Board of Hingham nineteen eighty-seven, a planning board has determined the adequacy of a way which is not a public way, but was a way in existence when subdivision control laws have affected the community. The planning board has the authority to deny an A and R endorsement if the way, in the opinion of the planning board, does not have a sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land. And I suppose to be fair, to, to flip that language right there around, you know, so if the question is posed, you know, is the road sufficient to provide access for residential use? As it does for, for the properties further westward? I guess that, that's the question that we'd want to make sure we answer.
Does it have sufficient width for a fire department? Equipment? And where's the turn, and where's the turnaround?
With shown in that plan, it's thirty-three feet for, I'm going to call it the private way. The paved width is substantially less. I'm not familiar enough with the terminus of Two States Avenue, say, of how, how any turnaround may be established.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Mike. I don't, I don't know the exact width of the road. It, it is narrow, it is tight. You can, you know, probably fit two vehicles barely through, passing each other. But right at the end of, you know, what I would say is the road itself, kind of where it flares out and where you see all the properties, there is a decent sized, sized area where, you know, I think a vehicle could turn around. Whether that's suitable for fire department, you know, I probably defer to their opinion on that. But I, I, there is a, I don't think you can pull up on an aerial map, John, like a Google Earth map. But there is a, there was a sizable turnaround area at the end of Two States Avenue.
And as John was saying, aren't there other houses, properties down there at the end?
Yeah, on the, yeah, I mean, I, on the, like, there's, there's, I mean, there's a handful of them, right? I think. The acts that you access that off of Two States, I think.
Yeah, I think there's at least five, if not even more than that.
Yep. Well, you know, I mean, my.
So in this scenario, this is.
John, where's the VFW here?
The VFW, they're a pavilion building to the rear, I mean, they're a panel, but there we go. There's a, they're, you know, building, this is the area to be split off from the parent parcel and to show some context for the remainder of Two States Avenue in this area down to west.
Mike, I wouldn't have a problem as long as part of our agreement, there is a written acceptance form from, for you. So the private road that goes with the deed.
My only question, Mr. Chair, is whether or not there's a mechanism to apply that.
Right, I mean, I All right, here's what I'm going to suggest and certainly push back if you don't, but I, I think we, I think we push this off to the next meeting and sort of run through it and figure out whether this is, I mean, I don't really have a huge issue with it. I just want to make sure that it's actually legal and not, you know, causing further issue over there. If there really, if there is any sort of access issues or anything like that, I don't want to make sure that there's no issue there, but I, I, I'm not in my head. I mean, I mean, I'm not inclined to. Well, when did it, when did it come in, John?
That's, that's what I'm chasing down, thinking about as well. This is Stanton, the town clerk, May fourteenth.
Well, that's a problem.
Why couldn't we go off of Richard's thought and put a note on the plan to the effect that it's on an acceptable way? I mean, it's obviously a way, it's a private way, but it's a way to all those other houses.
Mike, there's much, not much difference between that and, and estate law, really? You know, as far as access.
Well, I'm just wondering why you. Hold on, I'm just, there's two things here. I, I just. I mean, I think the answer may be that we've that it's granted because it's, we've, we've run the date, right? Haven't we? May fourteenth, it went to the clerk.
That is correct.
Twenty-one days. Let's forget you to the
Well, one option is not to act on it and just let it, let it go into effect without our action.
But that's what I'm saying. I think it already did. I mean, unless someone disagrees with me, I, I think it already did. So. I mean, I guess here's the, here's the other part of it, right? I mean, just, and, and I don't, I want to move on. But, you know, the reality is, is that to sell this property, there's going to need to be access that is deeded in some way. And so, you know, no, no title insurance company is going to, to, you know, no bank is going to allow this to, to be sold or to be built on with a loan if there's not some deeded access. So you know, that'll get dealt with in that manner. So, but I think we, I think we just move on because this is already granted by constructive approval. Any comments or questions or disagreement about that? To be on hot fish day. All right. So let's go on to seven forty, two seventeen, College Highway Site Plan Approval Continued. And I think I saw him on here before. Luke, are you? Let's see.
Yep, I'm here.
There you go. All right. So I think collectively between the board and and you guys, we got notice to the parties that hold an interest in that right of way on the property. You know, unless you have anything to add to the presentation, I think it's probably worth just going. I mean, I don't know if any of those butters are here, but it's probably worth just going to, to board comments and public comments unless you have anything else to add to it.
Uh, no, I don't have anything else said.
Okay. So any board comments on uh, this proposal for the, this is the daycare that's behind uh, that carved out parcel that's behind the CVS?
Hey Luke, can you put the map up? Mike, give him access to put the map of that up?
Yeah, he should have it. So, and actually before we start, let me just, before we start, let me put on the record. After he puts the map up, because I, I'll use that. Luke, if you wouldn't mind just zooming in on the, you know, the sort of stretch where the right of way is there, that would be great. Perfect. Yeah, that's. So we had continued this to get town councils input about the right of way and how building, oh, you know, not building, but putting in that driveway slash parking lot over the right of way, you know, whether that had any impact on the interests of the right of way holders. So there's two things that they have pointed, come back with. First is just paving over, you know, that area is not in any way going to be an impediment to the right of way. It arguably is an improvement, but it's certainly not an impediment that would have any legal implications for the right of way. The more, you know, the other thing that they noticed though is that the existing gravel road that goes to the properties to the north of this parcel, two properties to the north of this parcel goes outside of the right of way. And I, you know, who knows how long that's been there? Who knows, you know, who did it? There is a grove of trees to the left is where that, that road sort of curves to the right there. You can see it next to where the proposed building is. So we have a existing issue with the right of way and the access currently. The other aspect of this is that this is registered land, it's land court land. It's not, you know, your, your normal going to the registry and just filing something. So there's an added layer of, of what can and cannot be done with these types of property interests. So with that having been said, you know, from a planning board standpoint, you know, talking to town council, it's not so much our issue. You know, it's, it's, it's the issue of, of the landlord or the butters to, to sort of figure that out. You know, whether, whether they have a proper right of way or agreement otherwise and how that's done, that's, that's not our issue, but if it, if it does get approved, there's certainly going to be a condition in there that indicates that this has, you know, this approval is in no way, you know, blessing the, the current setup of that, of that access. That's, that's among the property owner and the butters to figure out. So having said that, let me, Dave Sutton, did you have a question or a comment? Is that why you wanted him to bring up the plan?
Well, I wanted to take a peek at it and the, the building is what, ninety, ninety, I can't read it, ninety something square, nine thousand something square feet?
Yes, nine three hundred square feet, about that.
What are you expecting for, you know, for the amount of people you're going to have inside that building as far as kids go?
Uh, the classrooms inside that building, max capacity, I believe, was seventy-six children.
Seventy-six kids, staff.
There's.
You look, you look, how many?
Four classrooms there and that, that's a maximum capacity.
Say again? With fifteen employees, so you're talking ninety-one people.
Wow.
All right, we got it. Folks, we'll get, we'll get to public comments. So let's, let's leave it to the, the board comments now and then we'll. leave it to the, the board comments now and then we'll open it up to the public comments.
That's roughly, that's about a hundred cars going in and out there every day.
Well, the children are driving, they're just being dropped off and picked up. So they're, they're in and out, but they're not parking.
Well, I know they're not parking. I know they're not parking. I'm, I'm saying that there's going to be drop off and pickups. About a hundred cars going in there in the morning, a hundred cars going in and out there at the end of the day. Roughly.
A good estimate, yep.
Okay. That's an awful lot of cars and such a crazy, and, 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 and that's a really congested area there with, with you got going on behind Big Y with the tractor trailer trucks going in and out. And then you got the entrance to the Ocean State Job Lot, the entrance to CVS, all combined in the same zone. And that's a, that's a pretty hinky spot to already get through during, during prime shopping times as it is now. Are you going to be clearing off the front of that property? So you haven't been a line of sight? Where attaches to finding a road?
Yeah, I mean, the, the stormwater basin is located right at the front there. And, uh, we're, we're actually limited to how much we can clear there because of the, the, um, there's a wetland resource there with a fifty-foot no disturbed buffer. Uh, but there is a, it is going to be cleared as, as close to that buffer as possible in that area uh, to provide, um, adequate line of sight.
Right, then, now back in the back of the building, how far is it from the back of the building to the property line to the next door?
Um, I don't have a dimension on it, but it looks about forty feet.
Only forty feet from the building to the property line?
Yard, ten yard or, yeah, ten foot side yard setback right here.
From the back of the building to the property line, straight back, not going toward, uh, yeah, right there. How far is it from the back of the building to the property line? The hell was that? That wasn't me, I swear.
It sounded like you. Alright, go ahead. Uh, Luke, do you have a measurement there with that includes the playground area plus the?
I was asking about forty feet, but I can get an exact measurement for you if you like.
That includes the pla- that in, that's from the playground or that includes the playground?
That includes the playground.
Okay.
Is there, isn't there a bigger setback than that?
What zone is, this is in, um, what?
It's in the B zone.
Do you have the chart there, Luke, on the?
Yes, those are the zoning review, the, the side yard setback, ten feet. That's side yard, oh, backyard.
Yeah, that's considered side.
Rear yard is twenty feet. Twenty-foot setback from somebody else's property to the back of the building?
Yeah, remember this is.
Business zone, yes. Marcus, what's the zone for the house next door to it? I don't know, I don't have the zoning map.
Does John have it? I'm working on it, folks.
So next door. Yeah, next door is just our forty, I think.
That's an awful tight going up to somebody's property. Forty feet. And then you've got, you've got twenty feet of, is that twenty feet of, of field in there, of playground?
Yeah, about thirty feet probably of playground width right here. So the, looking at this lot, you know, the developable space is pretty constrained. Um, there's this resource that goes through here and then the fifty-foot no disturb buffer. And then this is the one hundred foot, uh, buffer zone, which we try to stay out of as much as possible. Um, so we're kind of left with a, a little triangle sliver of developable area. Um, so we, you know, we did the best we could to keep the building as far away from the butters as we could without, you know, locating parking right next to their house, which I would assume would be less preferable. So that I, with the, with what this property is, I, I think this is your, your best option.
So there isn't really going to be any room to put any kind of a, uh, sound buffer or some, some, something to, something between the playground and their property to keep the, to keep the noise down and whatnot?
Yeah, so there is a proposed fence around the playground, um, one option uh, for screening and sound buffering is to make the, the rear of the fence, uh, a six-foot vinyl fence. Solid vinyl fence, uh, that would provide, um, some sound and buffering and screening.
Alright, um, any other board questions or comments?
Yeah, Marcus Phelps, uh, under site plan review, which in the B zone, this, this is what we're doing here. I thought it was in the B zone by right, not BR zone.
Let me look at what's in the B zone, is it? So then why is it on for a site plan approval, I guess? Is it site plan review? I thought we had an application for a site plan, I, I guess I didn't go back and look and see whether that's a specific. Where do you see that, Marcus?
Oh, I was just thinking in the business B zone, we do site plan review, not site plan approval, but I could stand corrected. Either way, we can modify this plan. We have the ability to modify this plan if we want to relocate the, uh, playground area or whatever else we would want to do. We could make it smaller, so there's more of a buffer between, uh.
I don't think we should do much, I don't think we should do much with it until you get the land court and everybody gets it, their issues resolved first.
What was that? Say that again, Dick.
I don't think we should do much with it until they get the land court or whatever the issue is here with the land.
That's not us, I mean, that.
No, I realize it's not us, but why do we want to approve a building that may not be able to come, be built anyways? Don't you, don't you think we should have, um, the property cleared to be able to do this before we vote on it?
No, the prop, the issue with the, the issue is between the right of way holders and the, and, and these folks and and how that's set up, I mean, that's, and again, you know, what the agreement is between them is whatever it becomes, it's just, it's not our issue, um, but it, you know, I wanted to bring it up because it, it needs to be needs to be out there, but it's just not, it's not going to be our issue and I just don't, we're not going to comment on it, I don't think in any decision, we're not going to make that.
What happens if they don't come to an agreement?
Then, then they are private landowners that can, that can do what they need to do to enforce, you know, violations of rights of way or, or trespassing or whatever you want, I mean, that it's a, it's a private issue, it's not a, it's not a town issue. You know, the issue that affects the town, I think, and the planning board is whether putting in that driveway and parking lot is a, you know, impediment, right? That, that would be something we have to take into account and, and town council didn't see an issue with that, but how it gets dealt with past that parking lot and the fact that it kicks outside the right of way is not, is I, I just don't think it's part of what the planning board needs to consider. Alright, uh, any other planning board comments or questions?
Well, again, uh, I would want to see some kind of a more significant buffer between the, uh, playground area and that private property in the R forty zone.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions or comments? Alright, uh, town officials, any questions or comments? Alright, public comments, um, just if you could, just, uh, state your name and address before you make the comments.
Oh, my name is Stephen Wazalowski. My address is two-two-nine College Highway. We are one of the direct the butters of this, this, uh, the plan here where it comes up near the building, you can kind of see it where it turns around there off the property line. And I, I think a key aspect, I, I think there's lots of key aspects, I think there's lots of key problems. But a main concern, when you look at the plan, you look at the, the ninety-three hundred square feet, this is a big facility, it's a hundred feet by an eighty-foot building with a house behind it that now is virtually not going to be seen because there's a giant building in front of it. But more importantly, the traffic aspect, so when they want to leave their driveway every day and they want to go to work, they need to deal with ninety-plus cars coming in of that small way right there in and out from, let's say, seven in the morning till nine at, nine in the morning, then they'll have a little break during the day and then when they get home from work, they're not even sure if they can get to their house because of the ninety-some odd pickups and drop-offs, employees, et cetera, coming and going from this property. And that brings in the next element of it. So what if emergency services needs to get to that house back there? Well, sorry, we couldn't get to you because there were seventy-four cars lined up getting their kids. It, it, there's, these are, the, we keep calling it in a right of way because that's the legal term, but these are people's driveways to their home because these properties are landlocked, there's no other access to them. That's why they were given the right of way, that's why that's the only way because of the, uh, two-two-nine college or the, the College Highway aspect, that's all wetlands, you can't go that way. Again, I think we're trying to squish, I mean, squeeze this giant structure into this little tiny space where even the land engineer himself said, this is the best configuration for this property because we only have this little tiny usable space. Well, why does that now become our problem? That the people decide to buy the property, but only this little portion is usable. And, um, now the, the sanctity of their home, their the, the, the ability to, to come and go freely in their home i- is all jeopardized because they want to put a daycare as close to that property line as they can and, and, and in all reality to everyone in this meeting, seventy-six children playing outside, what's a six-foot vinyl fence going to do for that sound? Have you ever heard two little kids screaming and playing outside? And, and we're going to do seventy-some odd kids, I, I just thought. I, I would just hope that we put a little more thought into this before we just go ahead and, and pull the trigger. You know, these are longstanding residents of the town and, and, um, again, that's really getting tight. It's a three-acre property and we are as close to that road and as close to those private homes as we could possibly get on that entire parcel.
Alright, um, any other public comments?
Yes, uh, I have one. This is, uh, David Reel, eighty-four South Long Yard. Uh, so, yeah, um, we, we actually need, have a dearth of, of daycare facilities in Southwick. We drive our kid down to Granby to a similar sized facility. And we really don't see much of a traffic issue, they think, I think they have fifty, sixty kids there, we rarely run into other parents dropping and picking off during this time period. And I figure if a facility this size can't be across from Big Y and CVS, where on earth in town is it acceptable to have a facility like this?
So this is Nancy Roberts, Ford Vining Hill Road, we directly abut this huge building. And there, there's a couple of concerns and mostly safety concerns that we have. One is, I think Steve mentioned about the right of way, that is our only way to that property. We don't have a, another way into that property. Now, right now, that right of way is just barely one car can go down that. If a truck's coming down or a delivery to either one of our houses, you cannot pass each other. And, and so it brings up the point of, I, I hear what you're saying, that we rarely run into parents. But you're still coming off of a, a, a pretty busily traveled road for Vining Hill Road. Vining Hill Road itself has so much traffic and it's very hard to pull out of that driveway and look, especially with the trees and the growth on that side. There's trucks coming from the back of Big Y, it is extremely populated. So that's a couple of our concerns and the other is, it's going to be directly, almost directly on our property. A six-foot fence isn't going to do really anything for us. You know, we have our own grandchildren that come and play in that yard, i- i- it would need to be a, a bigger buffer than that, like arborvitae's that are planted or something that, you know, really provided some type of buffer.
I mean, this is, this is Jim Roberts, Nancy's, Nancy's husband, and, and I mean, we basically have lost all our privacy um, to our, to our yard here and like Steve said, all these kids out here, uh, it, it's, uh, it just, I, I don't think a, a, a six-foot fence or even arborvitae's is, is going to do much for our privacy or the value of our home. And, and this, this right of way i- is is our only access to our house.
Okay, um, any other public comments?
I have a question, Sue Stevens, Tannery Road. The driveway going in, um, how, what's the distance between the land, um, the bu- the butters land? I mean, it's hard to tell on this, what it is.
What do you mean by distance?
What is the, what is the, I can see the driveway going up if I'm correct on the left.
Yep.
And I'm asking, what is the distance from the edge of that driveway to the butters land?
You mean the butter to the, uh, to the west here?
The left.
To the left of that, yeah. I, yeah, Luke, do you have that on the, on the plan?
Uh, excuse me, no, I do not. I mean, this, this is the twenty-foot right of way that they have access to travel over, so. I don't, I don't know exactly what this dimension is.
This is right up against the property with cars going right down, coming and going in circles, two, maybe three times a day.
Yes.
That, that seems close.
Alright, um, any other public comments or questions?
Are we? Are we a hundred percent sure with all the buffer zones or exactly where we need to be, the hundred, hundred-foot DEP off the front to fifty off the side? Is this all been double-checked? Is this all verified that this is? You know, this is put on a plan, but, um, again, are, 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 are we sure that this is within these means that this could, could even possibly happen? Again, I, I want to go back to the point that this is the leftover land from CVS's initial deal. So this was literally the piece that, that wasn't, couldn't work, they couldn't configure it. That's why it sat there for twenty-some odd years, until it went up for auction for a fraction of what these type of properties go for because realistically, they're not buildable, they're not valuable. That's, that's why the cost is what it was on this property and we're trying to squish a ten thousand square foot, seventy-six child daycare in it. Again, uh, the EP issue, so we've got a leach field over here in front of the building that it all comes down again, hence the word leach field, is this, this is all, these are all things that, that are okay? And these are just questions, I don't know, I didn't look into it. I just got this letter yesterday.
No, and that's fair. I mean, so with these site plan reviews, it, it doesn't trigger any sort of legal right to notice. It's something we need to address and we will probably address it in the future, you know, as a town. But from a, from a state law issue, it's not, it's not required. So we didn't get you, you know, but because of the right of way, I, I want to make sure that you were given notice and allowed an opportunity. You know, it did happen late, so I apologize for that, but you know, we were trying to get to you as, as soon as we could.
Oh my God, I want to, I want to say thank you for that. I know that you guys did that last minute out of being courteous to the surrounding neighbors. And again, I want to say we're very appreciative of that. But again, we keep using these terms because I get it, they're the legal terms, these right aways, they're not right aways. These are driveways to people's homes. These aren't just roads that don't go anywhere or accessibility. That's their only driveway to the house. That's how they get to their home. And now they have a 90 car turnaround twice a day to get in and out of their home. I can't imagine anyone sitting on this board or in this meeting would be legitimately okay with that. I mean, there, there, there's some fundamental issues that we have here, legitimate concerns. I think maybe if we work together and try to adjust some of the parameters, like you said, this is something we need to try to work out together. You know, again, let's do that. But again, six foot fence right on their property, line 10 feet off of it, 76 kids, 90 plus cars, two, three times a day. This becomes a busy road. But again, it's also a residential driveway, not just the right of way. There's more to it than that.
John Goddard, is this? You know, and trying to figure out the sort of scope of review as I'm looking through these bylaws, what, what is this, where are we, where is this falling under for permitted use?
If you could just word that a little bit differently, make sure to get it right in.
So this is in the B zone. Do you have a sense, if you want to look at it now, as to where you think that this falls in to be a permitted use in the B zone?
Okay. My marching through will be from a B to R20 and then R20 back to R40. Let's see if I can the term I'm identifying is nursery schools. And this is, excuse me, R40 permitted uses. Item number five, public schools, public libraries, museums, private schools, including nursery schools.
And that's fi- five?
185 12A5.
All right, thank you, I just wasn't finding it.
Looks like you paid the big bucks, John.
All right, so there's nothing else in that section that talks about it. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, any other board or town official comments before we figure out what we're doing here? Okay. So I mean, let me make sure I have this right. So I know Steve, you live in the second house going up?
Yes, Mike, so that, that, that goes past that second, that one there. And there's another one, it doesn't, plan doesn't show it, but that's the other, we're the other right of way. Yeah, we're directly affected by that, that, that is one of our main uses to get to our home.
All right, and Nancy and Jim, you are in that first property that abuts it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do any board members have an issue with the, with the proposal? In and of itself, if, 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 if the, if the abutters, you know, get together and figure out some sort of, you know, happy solution to this? Is there any inherent objection that board members have to this proposal?
I personally don't like how it's sitting so close to that property line.
Yeah.
And how much that's going to affect their privacy and their property back there.
Yes.
You're only talking 40 feet. And you know, like you had mentioned about a six foot fence isn't really going to stop a lot of noise and chatter. You know, those folks put their, their, their livelihood on that, on that property. And they're, they're, they're approaching retirement to spend time at their built in pool. And to spend the summer being, hearing screaming and yelling the whole time they're in their backyard. I just, you know, there's just not a lot of, not enough buffer and I don't see how one could be done.
I like Dave use that road quite often and I just, I'm concerned about the traffic also. So I've had times trying to pull out Big Y or, or just say job lot and go west on Vining Hill Road and a lot of traffic.
Okay. Marcus, not to put you on the spot, but what are your thoughts?
I think the access is, is not adequate. And I don't know if that whole thing could be reconfigured to change the location of the parking lot and make the building smaller. Move it farther away from that northern property line. I mean, as, as it is now, I would disapprove this plan as presented. But I don't know if that forecloses them coming back with a different plan where they have to wait two years or whatever. I don't believe it's, we're not denying a special permit, so I think they could come back in a short period of time if they wanted to try to do something that's more acceptable.
So
if I could speak to some of those issues?
Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, I explained a little at the last meeting about why we chose to, to utilize the access, existing access road for access to the site. And that is because that's really the only point of access for anything that would be developed on the site that is feasible. You know, we have the 50 foot no disturb buffer line coming right up to here. So this, in this frontage, this is the only place to access by avoiding that buffer. It, it seems a little ridiculous to put a a, another driveway neck, right next to an existing driveway. But we did expand the, the width of that driveway, of that right of way access, you know, to 24 feet, which almost doubled the width. Access to the site over here is, isn't really feasible due to elevation constraints in the wetland. If the buffer to the budding neighbor is, is really an issue, we thought 40 feet would be a significant enough in the fence, but if, I think the applicant would be okay with, you know, you know, doubling this or changing this buffer between the fence and the property lines of 20 feet and, and doing the, the six foot vinyl fence in addition to a row of arborvitae's, if that would please the board and the abutters. We could definitely make that work.
So my suggestion at this point in time would be to continue this out and let you guys, you know, from an applicant standpoint, think about what's been said tonight. It's probably worth you getting together with the abutters who, you know, have just sort of gotten notice of it and, and, and shown up and talk to them and see, you know, whether anything can be worked out with them. You know, I, I'm, I'm more, you know, I think I'm willing to sort of kick it off and just give you guys a shot to address some of this. It sounds like if I went to a vote right now, it's being denied. But you know, it did sort of come together with these objections pretty quickly in the last day or two. And I think it's fair to allow some degree of, you know, response to it. So that would be my inclination, but you know, if other board members just want to take a vote on it tonight, I'll entertain that as well.
What was the calculation on the parking requirement for parking spaces?
It's just employees, right? So I mean, it's, it's, it runs off of employees.
Yeah, it's employees plus one spot for every eight kids.
Yeah.
So right now, that's what we're seeing is the minimum that they are required to have.
They've got 30 spots. I mean, if it's 80 kids and 15 employees, that's what, 23 spots, 25 spots? I did math in my head real fast.
Yeah, I assume the calculation somewhere there, Luke, is that?
Yeah, so the calculation was on a plan sheet C0. And per the zoning ordinance, the required number of spots is 25 and we're showing 30.
All right, well, board, I, you know, I, like I said, I'm if folks want to do a vote on tonight, you know, I'm certainly willing to entertain that. But my, my inclination is I think it's appropriate to allow folks to, you know, mull this over and see if adjustments can be made and, and come back. You know, at the next meeting.
Have we heard from the abutter that's on Vining Hill Road to the west that has that fairly substantial driveway coming off the right of way?
I don't know if they're on here tonight. But that's, they, they don't have a right to that. They don't, they're not, they don't have a right of way as far as I'm, as far as I know. And they built that four or five years ago. That garage and driveway coming off of it. So, you know, that's sort of, that's sort of their own issue. Again, that's not a planning board issue, that's, that's their own, but they're, they don't have any interest in that, in that right of way that runs along that property.
Could I possibly chime in? Dennis Beltas, 73 Summer Drive?
Yes, go ahead.
Access from College Highway because of wetlands, can they put a raised road in there?
Luke, I see what your opinion, you know, you know this site better than we certainly do.
Yeah, so if you can see the, the college highway is about you know, 14 feet higher. It dips down real quick down to this wetland. So to put in a raised road, you know, to fill in the wetland or do a, basically a bridge across that wetland is just
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Development that would be put there and, you know, would make the, if that was the only means of access to the property, I doubt anybody would pay that much money to access it.
Okay. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion from a board member, either whatever direction they wish to go, we can vote on it.
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment real quick? I apologize for interjecting.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, Dave Reel, 84 South Long Yard. One concern I have is, is I feel like, you know, it's a little dangerous precedent in the sense that it feels like this is a permitted use of the property that meets all our bylaws. And it's almost like a moving goalpost to say, we don't like this. I mean, is there, I mean, if, if there is to be a denial, wouldn't there be, have to be some tangible actions the applicant could take that would satisfy the planning board? That, that's my concern for, for not just this property, but any permitted use in town, especially in an area like this. I mean, I couldn't think of a more likely spot for a facility like this.
I see some very real issues that I think, you know, that the planning board needs to look at in, in this type of process, which is, you know, you have the sort of traffic and, and access issues. You also have, you know, I mean, I'll let people decide how they feel about it, but I mean, you do have, you, you you're going to be having a number of cars now using a right of way during the course of day. And it's going to potentially, I assume, you know, on, on some probably limited number, but on occasion going to impact those homeowners. I mean, I just, I don't think you can say it's not going to. I'm sure they're going to come out sometime when there's, you know, a bunch of cars there. That's not a very long, you know, roadway, I don't believe, I don't know, I can't see the measurement, but we're not talking about a, a huge one. Where if you have any, you know, group of folks coming, you know, you're going to have a bunch of cars coming in at a, at a, you know, five o'clock or, you know, four o'clock or, you know, some, some prime time for, for pickup. It depends too, I suppose, on how the daycare sets their hours as far as if they have normal hours and then, you know, sort of extended hours that you, you sort of pay extra for. You know, there may be a rush of people at that end part before you pay more. So I, I think there's access issues. I think there's, there's potential impact to the right of way. There's the traffic when you come off of Vining Hill there with the, with the CVS and the Ocean State and Big Y, you know, and the trucks that are associated with those facilities. You know, so I, I don't think it's minimal, but I, I, you know, I think there's reason if, if it's denied and it, you know, I just heard three board members who weren't too keen on it, so.
Question? Dennis Beltas, 73 Summer Drive, what are they going to do with the snow?
Luke, do you, is there a spot put on that, on the site plan?
There's not a specific spot shown. But that typically that, you know, we show an area of three or four parking spaces for the size of development where the snow storage would be snow, the snow would be stored in the winter.
And how, Dennis Beltas, again, how how wide is that road going to be with the snowbanks?
Well, the entire road would be cleared and the snow would be pushed to the snow storage area and three or four of the parking spots. I mean, it's a, it's a 24 foot wide road, it's, you know, it's a two, two lane road coming and going. And it's, it's a circular motion and it, you know, it just, in my mind, as good as it gets in terms of access and, and vehicular movement. You know, these cars are not going to be lining up. You know, there's not a drop off queue or anything that, you know, they're going to be coming in and parking. And, you know, because of the way the people's work, jobs work, there's typically staggered pickup and drop off. So dropping my kids off every day at a, at a daycare, you know, whenever, it's about the same size daycare, maybe 50 or 60 kids and, you know, there's only four or five or other parents' cars there when I'm dropping my kids off or picking them up. So I really don't think all these cars are going to be coming in at the same time.
All right, any any motion do I hear? One way or the other.
We need a motion, I motion to continue this discussion to our meeting on July 13.
Do I hear a second?
I'd second that.
My only question would be relative to that motion, is there any constructive approval issue? As far as a clock on this?
I can't, well, that's, so this is. I don't think there is one with either the site plan. Review or approval, but John, do you have a? Something to look at for that?
I'm digging. Bit of a. Different beast.
Marcus, you think this is site plan review?
And that's what I'm thinking, but I don't think it really matters if we do, you know, as far as this motion goes.
I just want to make, as far as looking for what. May trigger a constructive approval, I want to make sure we're looking at the right thing. All right. I'm not seeing. And I know the A and R one, I know. I know the cell tower one, I'm not sure there's, I'm not sure I'm aware of one that would trigger on a. Site plan review or approval.
All right, and we can vote on the motion.
If I may just interject. Just, I guess my question is, you know, is there any direction from the board or? Or maybe John, as so what it is that you guys would like to see, or is it? You know, is it completely up to the abutters and whatever they want? I'm a little.
No, I mean, I.
A little direction.
I, sure, I mean, I, in my mind, and I let the other board members speak, but, you know, I see. I see some. It sounds like some adjustments, and I think that's it's reasonable, some adjustments to the back of the building. And how that's gonna butt up against, you know, a residential property. Next to it. I think. I I think, thinking through. The access issues. And. What can be done to deal with the fact that you're going through a right of way and you have other property owners there? You know, I think that's worth a discussion with the butters. It's not to say that the butters have, you know, every right and you gotta just do what they say, but I think. Because they've had one day of notice, I think having a discussion with them. And and seeing, you know, if some agreement can be made is, I think, a worthwhile. Process to see if there's an issue there, and I, you know, I think. Thinking through. How to deal, you know, if there's anything else that can be added to to deal with. You know, primarily, I guess, exiting that property. It making sure that all the sightlines are there, making sure that there's no. There's no issues because it is gonna, you know, that can get to be busy with with. With the businesses that are around there. So I I don't. That's the one thing, Luke, in all honesty, in my head, I'm not sure that there's, that may just be what. What? Is something that you can't get around. I don't know the answer to that, but, and I don't know if there's. Enough people here who are gonna vote no on that because of that reason, but that's the one that's. You know, I I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but it's it sounds like it's an issue that needs to be. At least. If you can think of anything else to sort of, you know, assure people of. That there won't be any issues with access or with, you know, exiting and and the traffic that's there. Not, I don't think it's on this plant, this one at least, but I mean, you were right. Well, I mean, you can look at the CVS exit, right? I mean, that's the CVS exit goes straight across to the exit entrance for. Big Y and Ocean State, so. I mean, you're you're just up from. From sort of to cross.
There is a staggering of the driveways.
There's what?
There is a staggering of the driveways between Ocean State and CVS. They're not directly across from one another.
What, yeah, the, oh, Big Y is just down toward College Highway from it, right?
I I go up that street.
Entrance is a little bit closer to College Highway, CVS goes up and then. Then you're behind the building for the truck entrance for behind Ocean State and Big Y.
I I go up and down that street probably thirty times a day. And there's a game, that's why we live in a recreational community, and there's a little game they play trying to cut across from one to the other without getting killed. Where you see them, they line up and then they zip straight across in front of a car coming the other way. It gets pretty hairy in there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Did did you, did you guys come to a conclusion if this is site plan approval or site plan review? Because there's a very different burden between the two. And I thought that site plan, I don't want to mess them up. Site plan approval. I thought mostly comes up under special permit. And site plan review is conformance to zoning. Under one eighty-five thirty-seven. And and. It's kind of important, I think, for the distinction here. Because one of them, site plan approval talks about. Sorry, I lost my place, but there's there's certain considerations that the board can take into account. In site plan review, not as much. And and it's an allowed use in a zone, so I think. Just looking at it. That's where you're gonna, that it's one eighty-five thirty-seven. Except for a single family home, which this is not. The can, the contents are the same for site plan review as they are for site plan approval. But the considerations are different. It's that the planning board finds the use structure are in conformity with the zoning bylaw, site plan will receive the recommendation of planning board. And then it tells it that the applicant has is responsible to pick up their plans, but that's under one eighty-five thirty-seven, the. The purview of the planning board, and and that was more to the point of, I think it was a. A Mr. Real made that, you know, there has to be a. Within the zone, you have to, and when something that's allowed by right in a zone. There has to be a a line of what you can and can't do, or or what the planning board can and can't do. As far as restricting that. And I understand, and I think what you're doing here is 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 the right move and let everybody huddle and figure out if there's a way to. To to satisfy the abutters on on that common drive that exists. You know, that, well, it's a common driveway today, be a right of way to. You know, those two parcels to the north. And, you know, with one of them a budding. A budding a B zone, and the other one is is in, it's actually a split zone parcel, and then the the one north is R forty. But I, I mean, that's probably the best approach, but I think you need to determine that and and. Just from my experience previous, I think that's where you are as far as the purview of the board at that, at this juncture with. The plan, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think the site plan approval is part and parcel of the special permit criterion. And site plan review is where you are as far as reviewing that it meets the zoning. For which the project is is intended.
No, I think that's right, and I think that's where I'm at, and I'm, I've been kind of going back and forth between the two as as you just mentioned, and. You know, I mean, I do think. You know, we need to make a finding that the use structures or site improvements will. Not be detrimental to the community. I think that that, you know. Is where the access and the traffic stuff, you know, may come in, and so that to me, I think, is. Is appropriate even for a site plan review, but I do agree, I mean, it's much more limited, you're not dealing with architecture and things like that as you would with a site plan approval. And so I, I guess I, I. Looking at the agenda, I had site plan approval in my head because that was how it was on there. But it is a site plan review. I think we've been looking at it that way. You know, because we haven't been caring much about architecture or anything like that, that you may look at more with a. Site plan approval, but. But that's a good point. Let's focus on that.
I just, I just think it, to to, and the point, the larger point I'm trying to make is when you have an application that's conform. Primarily conforming to zoning and. And any applicant in the town should, you know, for any project should. Have some certainty going into the into the. The process, even at the informal stage that. You know, that the rules of the road are the rules of the road, and I understand, and I understand, and I think you'd have to get, you'd probably get into a pretty hefty. Discussion around defining detrimental to the community versus, you know, conforming to zoning. You know, so if you've got a piece, a parcel that's zoned appropriately, the use is. An allowed use in the zone, I I get it, this is a much, probably turns into a much longer drawn out. Discussion than this particular one, but you you see where I'm going.
All right. So. Luke, did you have, was that? And again, board members can jump in if they have anything else to add, but is that, does that make sense to you, what I, what I mentioned or sort of what I'm thinking? No, you gotta unmute there, Luke.
Excuse me. Yeah, we we can. We can have a conversation with the butters and see if there's anything, any adjustments we can make that would would satisfy their concerns and.
I, you know, I mean, I just.
Related and and.
I think Doug pointed it out well, I mean, which is is. I think taking. Taking a couple of weeks, thinking this through, making sure that the access and and. Traffic issues, you know, are addressed as best as possible and giving the the butters. You know, more than a day to sort of think through stuff and talk to you about it is probably the appropriate way. To do that. You know, and I've been as. Practically speaking, I'm not sure it's gonna. Necessarily turn out well for you right now, so I think that may be the, you know. In in your mind, that may be a way to do it anyways, at least gets you two more weeks to sort of run through it and see if you can. Get to a point where it's acceptable. All right, so. What time? What time did we? We put that out at seven, the other one at seven ten? Why don't we put this on at seven twenty? So who made the motion? I'm sorry, Marcus, was that you?
Correct, I made a motion to continue with the July thirteen.
Right, and so. And I'll be at seven twenty.
Can I just ask, is that the next planning board hearing?
Not, but the next one is absolutely jammed up. We, on the June twenty ninth, we have. There's gonna be two, if not three lengthy hearings. There's no way we can fit this one in there on on June twenty ninth, there's just no way. You know, that July would be the earliest that we could do. All right. Do I hear a second on that motion?
Yeah, yeah, I seconded.
Okay. Roll call of Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been a I.
All right. So that'll be. You know, right up at the beginning of the of the. July thirteenth meeting, but Luke, that's really the, you know, we, it just, it couldn't happen, we'd be here until, you know, midnight on the. On the next meeting, and we can't do that, so. So.
I understand you guys are a busy board.
So. You know, that's, you know, but we'll. You know. Do, you know, do what you can and and we'll. About it and, you know, be in touch with with John. If you need any, you know, discussion with him to go back and forth, and hopefully we can, you know, wrap this up. All right.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so are at finally. Seven forty-five in planning board time. We have the project fail. Special permit. Continued hearing. Now. For. Just sake of. Putting it out there, we do have a, I I know, and I'll let Jessica speak in a minute, but we do have a request, they need additional time to sort of. Deal with some more technical aspects of the plans and adjustments based on, I believe, DPW. Input, and so. I think they're gonna defer. Sort of further discussion about. Changes to the next meeting, and this will primarily be. We'll go, we'll just jump straight into public comments, you know, town official comments. And just, and and go through that process tonight. Am I right, Jessica, on that?
Correct, yes, so we've been chugging along on revising the site plans based on the comments we received from DPW and FIRE. As you know, it's a pretty substantial site, and revisions are taking longer than we anticipated. So we have put in a request, yesterday we submitted a letter requesting a continuation to the twenty ninth. For us to present our revised plans that will give us the next couple of days to wrap up what we need to do and then provide the town the adequate time that they need. In order to re, to review the plans. We don't, we don't like. Having anybody feel like they're under the gun to provide comment in receiving plans on the same day, so we're trying to be respectful of that and make sure that Randy and others have adequate time to review.
All right, so. This will end up getting continued, but I think it's probably worthwhile since this was advertised and. The public comments, my suspicion is are more broadly aimed at the project rather than the technical. DPW changes in input, so why don't we get to those? I mean, let me go in the the proper order first, any board or any board comments or questions? You know, that they want to raise before we.
Just a quick comment, I had provided to Megan and she sent it out to each of the planning board members. A report from the planning department in Chesterfield County, Virginia. Which is east of Richmond, Virginia, where Carvana is currently building a facility very similar. To this project proposed in South. So the planning boards can see. The various conditions that the Chesterfield County was looking at putting on the Carvana project.
All right, thank you, Marcus. Did everybody on the board get that?
No.
All right.
Yeah, I missed it too.
No.
All right, so we'll just make. All right, so we'll just make sure. That gets circulated. Meg, if you could just make sure that gets circulated to everybody. Tomorrow, that would be great.
Would it be possible for the town and the board to be willing to share that with applicant team as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I. We will, we will pass that on and it'll be available. If anybody. You know, any public members need to see it too, just reach out to the, the planning board office and, and that can be made available.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep. All right, any other board comments? All right, any town official comments?
Chairman Doherty, the only suggestion I would have, this is Doug Mogul in five hidden place. Is perhaps. Given the size of the project and some of the documentation and plans. Even though we're reopening Town Hall, it might be convenient to make a carve out a section on the website to post these plans and documents such as this. So people can. Get them at the click of a mouse.
Yeah. No, that's fair because it's been probably a couple of requests at least that I've been made aware of as far as looking at site plans over the last couple of days, I think, so. We can talk to Jim and. See if we can get that stuff on the. On the website over the next couple of days.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yep, good suggestion. Any other? Town officials? All right, public comments. If you could, why don't you just hop into the comments and just. Indicate if you have something to say and I'll try to go in order. And I'll start. With Sue Stevens, but if everybody else can just hop into the. Chat and indicate if you have a question, I'll just, I'll run through the list. Sue, why don't you start, just put your name and address out there first, please?
Again, Sue Stevens, thirty-three Tannery Road. I live about a half mile down from where this proposed Carvana is being put in and I am a bit concerned with the traffic and I. Know I missed a meeting. I actually was not aware of it until it was posted on. The Southwood page and Doug, thank you for some of the information you did provide. Could you clarify how many cars are supposed to be going in or are trucks delivering cars or in or out? What is the traffic flow? As I understand it, I guess first I want confirmation, the entrance is going to be where the old. Culborough entrance is because it looks like it's gravelled now so they can get in there. Is that correct? That's where it's going to be on Tannery, right across from the entrance to say the farm?
Yes, that's correct. I, if I'm willing to share the screen of the old plans, if that would be helpful, if you need to take a quick look of where the entry is, but I, I do want to note that these are. Under revision, if that would.
Yeah, I would like to just see it because the picture I saw, I did ask if it could be posted as well.
Sure. So the access to the site is coming off Tannery, right at this location. Zoom in a little bit here. And it would be coming into the site, like I said, these are under revision, so I just want to make clear. You know, all in all, the, the general concept is remaining the same, but where we're going to be seeing some revisions is in the size of these infiltration basins and some of their locations. But the site accesses into here, employee parking is located. At the top, we have a total of four hundred and twenty-eight employees. The way that the traffic is going to be flowing is that there's going to be two shifts of employees and the shifts are going to be offset than the typical commuter times. So the shifts will be earlier than, they'll be around from six to two, and then there would be another shift change at two o'clock. So the. Two, I believe, seven. So, you know, there will be, there will be, they're going to be offset against what the commuter, the typical commuter would be. There will be trucks coming in and out of the site. There are stinger spaces here that will be for the loading of the inventory. And there will be, I believe, three to four trucks per. Coming in and out. I can double check the, the traffic report though and make sure that that's.
What are they, they, these are car carriers and how many cars are they carrying?
They are car carriers. I would need to confirm the, the total number, but I would say somewhere between eight and ten. I know that there are a number. There's, the applicants are on as well, so they might be able to speak more directly about the operations, but the typical car carrying stingers that you would see that carrying cars on the road. They would be loading the inventory onto those trucks and then pulling them offsite.
Two things about traffic are my concern. That we only have a stop sign now on two ten and two oh two. So obviously I would hope that this town is looking at some sort of traffic light. Is that correct?
That would be correct. It's. How it would be set up is. There would be a, I believe it would be called sort of a mitigation funder, however it's termed. But money would be contributed by Carvana and, and perhaps other property owners in that area to fund the. Traffic light. The town would construct it, but it would be funded by. In large part from that, from that mitigation fund. Or come, you know, mostly from the property owners right around there.
And I understood too that Tannery Road, they're going to try to keep it so there's no access down Tannery. I mean, as it is. Sam West and some of the other businesses, we have, you know, sixteen wheelers going through completely full and I'm concerned about how fast they go. And adding to that. So my question is, I thought, I was told or understood that they may not be allowing them down there, so is that true? And if not, or if it is, how are you going to control that?
Jessica, I'll let you speak to. You know, what you're. What at least is being proposed by the applicant as far as traffic control.
So. Traffic control is, you know, just is through the site. Coming in and out of, off of Tannery Road. The discussions that we've been having with the town are for, for improvements in signalization and potentially roadway widening. For the, for the, for the intersection. So. You know, there's, there's. Are you still seeing the plan or do I need to reshare it? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so. You know, it simply is an access, an access road off of here onto, onto Tannery. So there's no specific signalization or anything happening at this location. The traffic control would be happening down here.
Okay. That's good. My question is, you said something about widening the road down at the intersection as well?
So these are discussions that are happening at the town level that the applicant team has been. Part of the conversations of, there is no specific design at this time. There's concepts that have been discussed. This would be a town initiated project. And given that this isn't just the only user at this location, there is Dollar General, there is other commercial businesses that would benefit from, from the signalization. It's also on our understanding that. Looking at intersection improvements has been something that's been on Mass DOT's radar for quite some time. This isn't, you know, a new idea that's been put forth because of this proposed use. This is something that has been. Thought of and has been considered for some time. And so. You know, this while it may. Add additional warrants to a signalization that these are discussions that have been already in play for some time and the applicant. Team is willing to put funds to contribute to installation because it only does benefit the applicant as well. They want to make sure that they have. Safety for their employees, for their truck traffic. So it's a benefit to them to make sure that the traffic is controlled in a safe manner. Not just for the butters, but for them as well.
So the traffic itself for, for these trucks delivering, coming to and from will be primarily from Tannery to ten and two oh two. But not down Tannery towards Westfield or is that, I mean, is that something that was? Can be even stopped? I don't know. I thought for some reason they were trying to keep the trucks and stuff more toward ten and two oh two. Is that correct or am I not?
I think that would be the majority of the truck traffic would be heading towards two oh two.
And but employees could be coming.
From any direction.
Because we could have upwards to four hundred employees in a day coming to and from. Up and down Tannery.
Correct. And, and the applicants, it's a phased approach with the employees. They'd be starting off with a smaller amount and building up as the capacity of the facility. Gets greater. So in the beginning, it necessarily wouldn't be for her employees on day one. It would be a gradual approach of, of. Additional employees over time, but like I said, it's, it's a shift approach. And so there would be. You know, two hundred coming and going in the first shift and then a second shift.
Okay, and one other question, so I don't take up the whole night. On the building itself, if I'm understanding, one part of it is like. Eight stories, is that correct or am I incorrect?
No, it is not any story.
Itself going to be with the cars?
Um, I believe it's, it's a, it's a, a single story building, so it really isn't very high and it would be. It would be shielded and screened from all public ways. So really because of the way that the topography is and with the screening. You necessarily would not see it from the roads. It'd be very well hidden.
Okay, thank you.
Marcus Phelps, I just comment quickly. This is not a retail sale facility, so there's no car vending machine. Which is kind of an attraction that Carvana has. This is a vehicle processing.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Doherty? Cynthia Marshall, forty-five Coase Hill Road.
I just want to, I want to do, there are some folks in the, in the comments. I'll come right back to you.
Okay.
But I know one of the, I don't know if it's Amber or her husband. One of the box wanted to make a comment or had a question.
Yes, thank you. It's Mr. Bach. I'm curious, it's a, it's a, a car prepping facility. Is, is that what I'm understanding? So are they going to be detailing washing cars and detailing cars? Do we know how much water usage there is going to be for this facility? Because that, I know we already are on a water shortage here in town. I can only water my lawn one day a week. So if we have an industrial water user coming into town. That concerns me. And, and I know that a lot of times it seems like the planning board, and this is a little off topic for this one specifically, but we seem to be playing like a goalie. With people that are coming with proposals and the town is coming up with reasons why we don't like it. Is there any way we can get the town to start? Figuring out what we want to do in town and then going out and seeking those investors to come in? Those are my two comments. And the first one is much more important than the latter. So if, if we know what the water usage is and then what kind of. Plan there is for the chemicals that'll also be used, that'd be great.
I, I, I'll let Jessica. Answer the, the. Water usage and the chemical plan. In a minute, but let me just address. One issue. And certainly, I know if Randy's still on, you know, he's, he's in the water department and can speak. A lot more intelligently about it than I am, but as I understand it, I just want to make sure that people are. Understanding this, you know, the, the sort of distinction. The water ban. If for outside usage in town. Has to do with. The, the. Actual conditions that exist right now and the drought conditions. And so it's runoff of the Westfield River and what the stream flow of the Westfield River is. And so. That's what triggers the water, the outside usage water ban in town with the, with the. You know, desire to sort of. Address an actual condition that exists. You know, and that is written in, as I understand it, into the, to the water withdrawal permit that the town has for, for the groundwater sources. You know, that's to be distinguished. With the usage. Caps that we have, and that's what led to the moratorium recently. There are usage caps as to how much water can be drawn out of the ground. Daily and over the course of a year. There's also, you know, the, the, we have access to Springfield as well. And that's limited by the, by the size of the pipes that are there. But that, you know, the, the outside water ban really doesn't necessarily connect to usage. Those are two sort of different analysis other than. From a thirty thousand foot view, they probably both go to the finiteness of water, but. You know, they aren't necessarily the same. I get that they, you know, have come up at the same time and so people are sort of linking them, but I don't think. Technically, they are, they are linked. But certainly, you know, if, if Randy or other folks who are. Much more intelligent about this than I am, want to comment on it, they can. And I also let Jessica, you know, talk about the, about the actual numbers and, and plan that they have.
Yeah, Mike, if you want me to comment on that, I think you hit it on, you, you, you explained it very well. The water use restrictions that we have in place now are merely a function of Mother Nature. And the drought conditions that we are in, they have nothing to do with how much water. That's being drawn from our water source or how much water we're pumping into our water system.
Thank you, Randy. Jessica, did you have handy those, those estimates? And I, my understanding, at least when they were first presented, is you're sort of. You have sort of. I guess, upper projections, but you also have projections based on usage elsewhere and, and how these facilities have run. I, is my understanding, is that right?
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to verify. It's, it's.
And I'm putting you a little bit on the spot because this is more of an applicant issue than, than, you know, yours. I think this came from the applicant at the, at the initial meeting.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a number of conversations about utility usage and the number of gallons. It's definitely, I'm looking at sanitary sewer numbers right now, so that's not the water. But it's, 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 it's a couple thousand gallons per day and if. If Brinkman Construction's online, they can confirm those numbers. What I would say though is we've had numerous conversations with the community regarding the water usage. The applicant has, for months, we've been discussing this. And we understand there's a water moratorium. We know that there's plans in place of the community to upgrade the water infrastructure. The facility, this is critical because of the car washing component. It's critical for them to be able to have water access. And without an indication from the community that the water was going to be available with the infrastructure improvements that were approved at town meeting and are now moving forward in a construction bid process. We understand that there will be readily water available once that infrastructure goes into place.
So. I, I don't mean to jump in here, but I'm getting a little bit lost in a couple of the explanations. First is that water usage. For homeowners is different than water usage for your facility. Okay, I get that. Second is, we are in a water moratorium or one day. Watering our lawn one day because we have a water shortage based on something from Mother Nature, but that's not going to exist for Carvana. And then thirdly. Is. The amount of water that you're going to be drawing. Is not going to come from the town source or is this going to come from wells? I'm not understanding exactly where the water's coming from, first of all. And secondly, there's already been a town meeting on how to upgrade the water system to accommodate Carvana, but this is supposed to be an initial meeting for the Carvana? I mean, if the town has already said that they're going to give the water to Carvana, then I'm going to assume that. So, you know, subsequent conversations as a resident of town occurred that I was not aware of, and that's probably my own fault for not paying close enough attention.
Christian, let me try to, let me try to clarify it because I, I, you know, I think it's important to clarify. So. There is a water ban. That allows, that limits outside usage. And I think it, I, I don't know, Randy can certainly fill me in, but I think it applies to both commercial and residential. But, you know, I, I think, I think it does for the outside usage, but I could be wrong. Maybe it doesn't, I don't know. But, but that has to do with outside usage of water. That is different than the water moratorium, which was enacted. Last summer. That limited water connections. For any new developments, you know, commercial or residential developments. It's been adjusted. Somewhat recently to allow for anything up to a hundred fifty thousand gallons a year. And they're going to be reconsidering it at the July. Meeting is my understanding. That's different. That's, that's a moratorium on water connections and the reason that came about was because. They have limits on water usage and how much water can be drawn from the wells.
By Jessica's own estimate, she said several thousand gallons a day. So we're talking over seven hundred thousand gallons a year. That's more than a hundred fifty thousand. I'm pretty.
Cool, cool. Well, so. So, yes, I mean, no question it is, so. I suspected that. So I suspected that, you know, I, I, all signs so far have been pointing to the fact that that moratorium will go off in July. That's not necessarily the case, that's depending on the water commissioners, but, you know, that's where it seems to be going. And that would allow for new connections. There's a couple reasons for, to my understanding, why that would be the case. You know, there was a distinct spike in water usage last year. Now, I think it, you know, is logical to believe that the fact that everybody is sitting at home and, and doing a lot more at home is, has some connection to that, right? And so that that is going to start to fade away as we, as we move out of the pandemic. And we also have, you know, what was voted on at town meeting was not specific to Carvana in any way, shape or form. As I said before, there are two sources of water. One is from the ground and, and those have limits of, I think, like a million gallons a day and two something a year. And then you have a supplemental source from Springfield that comes through, you know, pipes coming into town. And that is not limited by numbers, but is limited by the size of the pipes. You can only have so much that comes in at any given time. What was voted on at town meeting was a project to increase the size of those pipes. So the supplemental source from Springfield can be increased. And so realistically, the amount of usage on a daily basis can be increased because we have access to more water on a daily basis. So that's how that played in, and that wasn't Carvana specific. I don't, I mean, my understanding it wasn't. It was simply more a response to, and maybe even in the plans beforehand, but certainly a response to the fact that we were hitting up on limits last year and we gotta find a way to, to sort of, you know, adjust that if, if there's gonna be, you know, any sort of reasonable growth in this town, other than what, you know, what it is right now. You couldn't add another development in any way, shape or form.
And then that's part of my concern as to why seven hundred fifty thousand gallons for one large industrial user is the best idea for the town. And that was my second comment about, instead of playing hockey goalie, we should go out and seek the developments that will fit appropriately, like with our town. More to focus on the water. Seven hundred thousand gallons of water usage, where is all that water gonna go after you clean the cars and wash the cars?
Well, there is a reclamation system that's part of this, it's not just a use and dump system. There is a huge component to this facility to recycle the water. And I just received confirmation from the Brinkman Constructors. I had nine thousand gallons per day in my head and he's confirmed that that is correct. So that would be the daily usage. But there is an entire recycling system that's part of this facility to reclaim the water and reuse it.
So will the, are, are you, what type of, oh, system is in place to reclaim all the water? Make sure that seven hundred thousand, or I guess now it's three point six million gallons of water a year, at ten thousand gallons a day. Three point six million gallons of water being utilized by Carvana, is all of that gonna be recycled? Or is some of that gonna seep into the groundwater? And if we have six million gallons of water being used by Carvana with cleaning chemicals and agents for cars, will that also get into our groundwater? And this then becomes a, an issue of what the contaminants will happen to the headwater recovery system for our groundwater for the town.
Oops, so the system in place is not, there's not gonna be any direct dumping into the groundwater. There's a whole stormwater system in place with infiltration, infiltration systems, with, with cleaning systems to ensure that the water is clean. There are very strict DEP regulations in regards to stormwater regulation. So we cannot, and, and I believe that Mr. Doherty had mentioned this previously on a previous application tonight, is that our pre and post-stormwater runoff must be exactly the same. And so there's incredible amount of time and energy spent into creating a stormwater system that meets those standards. Water cannot be contaminated and be dumped into groundwater, it's, it's against environmental regulations. So we are meeting all the regs, we are meeting the stormwater DEP regulations. We have a very carefully crafted stormwater system in place. So I don't think that's going to be a concern. We've gone through the Conservation Commission, we've been very cognizant and clear about where the delineation of our limit of work has been. And we are completely outside the wetland buffers. We have been very thoughtful in that process. So the stormwater system itself, I think, would alleviate any concerns that you would have about groundwater contamination.
No, it doesn't, I can assure you that. And DEP regulations do not alleviate my concerns about groundwater. There were DEP regulations in place when Southwick was contaminated with all the pesticides and chemicals they used on the tobacco products. And we're just finally getting clear of that now, after decades of making sure that we don't contaminate our drinking water or allow large corporations to come into small communities and use three point six million gallons of water a year. That seems like a lot, I'm very concerned about this project and, and I think I'm so far against it.
Marcus Phelps here, Jessica, there was no mention of the connection to the sewer.
The sewer's not up there.
We can't hear you for some reason.
Yeah, the.
There we go.
Object is designed to connect into the sewer that we have in Southwick. Jessica, that's what this gentleman was concerned about, was the water that is being used and then where is it gonna go? It's not the stormwater, it's the process, the cleaning water.
So I see, so this, so that, so car wash water isn't, is obviously not going to the stormwater system. So that is going to the, through oil water separators into the sanitary system. And so the, the project is proposed to pull from the existing sewer line that runs underneath the bike trail. We have a proposed loop that's gonna be running to the project and connecting to College Highway for any future users. It'll be stubbed out, but that is, that is where the car wash water will be headed into the sanitary.
Okay. Cynthia Marshall, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, I have a couple of comments here. The first one is to Sue Stevens. Marcus, on the last meeting, you gave us a figure for the additional traffic in and out of the facility, according to the traffic study that was done. And was that figure two thousand four hundred and sixty-six additional trips a day? Or two thousand six hundred and forty-six additional trips? Not, I'm not talking, you know, I know there's four hundred and some odd employees, but there were two thousand and some odd, while you're looking that up. Randy, I thought, this is for Mr. Bach, that we were coming off of the Springfield water because they could not continue to filter, filtering our drinking water. And that was the purpose of building Rosewood on Jared Lane, the new pumping station. And as far as this, all the new infrastructure for the water supply, it sounds like the taxpayers are going to be bearing that cost and not Carvana for the, you know, the expansion here. And as far as the number of cars that are going to be parked there, I've had a conversation with Mr. Goodard today and found out that that is going to be all asphalted over. And I believe the number that Mr. Goodard came up with, and perhaps Jessica could maybe be a little more clear on this, but there was approximately eight thousand seven hundred parking spots for vehicles on that parcel. So those are all my comments and I can wait for some answers here.
So we're, so there's employee parking, which were considered to be striped parking. The rest of the asphalt is for, of, for the inventory in various stages of its processing. Let me pull up the plans again, and again, these are unrevised, but. The plans note of how, how the car, how different processing. So there are some that are in the ready line, there are some that are in their various stages of, of being outbound, of coming inbound. So they're not necessarily parking spaces in the typically way that you would define a parking space or categorize it under the zoning. It's simply asphalted area for the storage of the inventory. The striped spaces are for the employee parking, which is up here at the top. So there's four hundred and twenty-eight total spaces for employee parking. And yes, that is, the plan is to pave it. But like I said earlier, there is a very extensive stormwater system that deals with the impervious surface. The stormwater system is being revised to handle the flow even better. So that is going to be, that is going to be provided in a future plan set. But, but yes, that is, that is the case.
Jessica, could you just indicate where the bike path is real quick?
That's okay. So the bike path is over on this location here.
So how much area, Jessica, do you have for parking vehicles? How many are they anticipating to be in that, I wanna call it overflow or staging? Or there are different staging areas?
I think it depends on the amount of inventory that they would have at any given time. I think if they're successful and the, and the, the market plays out, like they anticipate that they could, it would be filled with inventory so that they could, they could process it along. Like I said earlier, this, there is a phased opening to this. And so it wouldn't be completely filled right from the get-go. It would be, it would, it would fill over the course of time. But this entire area is screened pretty significantly from all the public ways. So you really wouldn't be able to see with the fencing and the screening, the inventory. It would, it would be non-visible from, from the bike path and from the public ways.
And this is a, I, to make it clear to anybody who wasn't at the last meeting, this is a northeast distribution center, correct?
Correct.
Northeast, okay. And one more thing, then going back to the used car sales license, does Carvana plan on obtaining one of those at this point?
Not the local license, they do intend to have a class two license for the use at the statewide level. But this, like we had noted earlier, this is not a retail facility. There will be no sales of cars at this location. It is simply a processing of, of inventory for the vehicles.
And the class two is, does that go before our local licensing board? From what you said, it's, they're going to the state for the class two license?
Well, they're getting licensed for the state level because they have other facilities in other parts of the state. So they will carry that license throughout them, throughout the state. But there will be no sales of cars from this location.
No, I understand that. Marcus, did we come up with that figure?
Yes, it's, this figure comes from the traffic study, which, when they post everything online, you'll be able to see the whole study. But with the full build-out, there will be two thousand six hundred and sixty-four vehicle trips per day. And they break that down into thirteen, thirty-two entering vehicles and thirteen, thirty-two exiting vehicles once the site is completely built out. So that would mean it's in full operation.
Thank you, Marcus. One other thing here is going back to Mr. Bach's question about what Southwick wants for Southwick. As far as the businesses that are north of fifty-seven west versus the businesses that are south of fifty-seven west on ten and two oh two, it's pretty obvious that the town wants the north side of fifty-seven west developed as much as they can and all the property up here on this end of town, all the open land. And, you know, we, you know, we were a bedroom community. You know, putting this humongous industrial development in this town anywhere, to me, is, is, is not good, not good for Southwick at all. That's it. Thank you. Oh, yes, and another thing for Sue Stevens, that the Crane Pond Bridge, I call it, which is down the bottom of the hill, is closed, of course, to truck, tractor, trailer. And anybody, and if, if these car carriers are coming in off of the pike, they're gonna be coming down Tannery to access this. You know, so, you know, because instead of taking the detours all through hillside and Granville Road or wherever else they're detouring, coming down ten and two oh two from the pike. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Mike, this is Randy. Can I, so there was a question and comment about the, the water line and the water, made improvements that are being proposed. I just wanna clarify that issue. So this is a project that's probably two years in the making. So two years ago, the town appropriated funds to install a new pump station of Jerry Drive. And part of the original project was to replace or upgrade the pipeline from that new pump station into our connection, our, our connection with Springfield Water Sewer that's in, in Westfield. So we appropriated mon, money for that project. When we opened bids, we realized that we were a little short. So we ended up pulling the pipeline improvements out of the project and we moved forward with the pump station project only. And that's what was built up Jerry Drive, that work finished about a year, a year and a half ago. So last year, during, as we were going through our budget process, it's twenty twenty, COVID had just hit and there was some uncertainty with budgets and revenue from water and sewer users. So there was, at that time, there was a proposal to, to, to appropriate money to complete that project and upgrade that pipeline. But due to the, the uncertainty with COVID, we, we pulled that meat top, that article off of town meeting floor prior to that, that point. And, and this year, now that we're in a better situation, understanding of how the impacts from COVID, we put that article back on town meeting floor. And that's, that is what was approved at town meeting about, about a month ago. So those, that's the project that, that we are moving forward with, nothing specific to do with Carvana. It really was a function of the, the, the growth that we are seeing in town and trying to be prepared for that. But what happened last year, as Mike noted, our water use spiked drastically. So our water use went up about twenty-seven percent over the prior year usage. And as a result, we were basically pumping all the water we could, pumping all of our, all, all of our, our sources as, as often as we could and we could barely keep up with demand. So because of that situation, the water commissioners voted to enact a water moratorium on new water services. That was done last August. And then that moratorium continued until about a month ago, when the water commissioners released part of that moratorium on smaller services. That, that would be more of the, you know, the residential, single-family housing. Those, those projects can now proceed, but the moratorium still exists for projects that would, that would draw more than one hundred fifty thousand gallons of water per year. So Carvana would, would fit under that category. They are fully aware of the moratorium that's in place. I mean, I think this is a discussion topic we've had with them since day one. And so there, there's the project that we have planned now that was appropriated town meeting. Once that project is complete, we do believe that we will have enough water to supply with, supply Carvana plus other developments that, that are, that are out there right now. First one, I wanna clarify that.
What's the increase of water annually with the new pipeline, how many gallons?
So right now, we can, we can draw about six hundred gallons per minute out of that Jerry Drive pump station. We will be able to double that capacity when the pipeline improvements are complete. So, you know, six hundred, twelve hundred gallons per minute. I'm trying to do numbers in my head real quickly, but it, it's, it's certainly more than enough than we're talking about with, with Carvana. But plus, plus a lot more.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point, just to, to be clear. That Warren article at town meeting, that money comes from water retained earnings, not from direct property tax. So tho, those improvements are funded and paid by the water user.
So by, by our water bills?
Correct, so. So Carvana would be a significant water user and would be a contributor to paying down that debt and paying for the water that they use. So I just want to be clear because it was stated, I believe incorrectly, that, that Warren article would put a burden on the taxpayer to pay for that infrastructure improvement that benefits the overall water system. But those, that Warren article and any other usual, usual wa, uh, water system improvements are paid for from water retained earnings, which come from water bills. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I don't think I saw anybody else's name in the com, in a chat. So if anybody has anything, now would be the time to speak up. Okay.
Christopher Gamble, you're muted. You got a mute on, you're talking, but no one can hear you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Chris Gamble, 35 Tannery Road, Southwick.
Yep.
So my question is similar to Sue's. On the last meeting, you said that the traffic was going to head out of Tannery Road and onto College Highway, all the traffic. Is that true?
My understanding, if, if that was what stayed with the last meeting in regards to that, then yes. I mean, that has been part of, that has been the majority of the discussion is yes, it would be going down College Highway.
And who would enforce that?
Who would enforce that?
Right. Who's going to make that happen?
Well, I think they're, the, the idea is that they're going to be trying to get their inventory out as quickly as possible in the route that's most efficient and safest for their truck traffic. So it's, it, it behooves them to use a roadway that's wider and safer than it would be to be going down Tannery.
Okay, but the, the employees will be using Tannery Road east and west?
Correct. They could be coming from any direction.
Okay, but there'll be a lot of extra traffic. It'll be off-peak hours, is that what you were saying?
That's correct. So to confirm what those shifts changes are, so there's two shifts from 6:00 to 2:00, and then from 2:30 to 10:30, but each one consisting of maximum of 425 employees at the full buildout stage.
Okay, that's a couple, couple thousand trips a day or something?
Yes, so I had shown, I can share it again. This is the, this is the breakdown from the traffic impact study, which is available, it was submitted with the application, it is available for review. So this is the breakdown of the weekday, weekday AM and PM traffic from employee trips. We're presuming that 10% of the employees will take a break and leave the site during their break. And then including the call how, call, car hauler delivery trips, fixed body delivery trips and test drive trips. So at a total, this is the number that was referenced earlier, is around 2,600 trips per day. And then breaking it down.
Okay, so if that's off-peak, then with, with the peak, that's like we have peak all day long. You know, there's going to be a lot of traffic here.
So this, so this is, this is the, looking at it in the peak hours, the typical peak hours. So you'll see that the employee trips, there are none during the typical AM peak hours and during the typical PM peak hours. And that the call, the hauler traffic and the truck traffic is also not going to be happening during peak hours. So the, the operations of the site are such that they really are trying to provide a minimum impact to the traffic and really doing it with, with outside those traffic peak times.
I see. There's still a lot of traffic there. Now with the town, excuse me, with the town erect, a sign maybe like around Sam West Road so that the heavy trucks don't go from Sam West into Westfield. You know, I mean, they're breaking up the streets. There's the tiny culverts over those little streams. And those things are, you know, it's very dangerous, I think, with all that weight, all those vehicles. You've got gravel trucks. I mean, some of the trucks are okay, but some people doing business here, but it's a cut through too. And I think the tendency for most people are going to want to cut through. So I was wondering if the town would erect some signage limiting the tonnage on that road from Sam West into Westfield. Is that possible?
I mean, the one thing I would throw out there, I guess, just for future planning, and this is not something that is necessarily happening anytime soon, but they're, they're in the, you know, I guess, research phase or, 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 you know, evaluation phase of connecting Sam West over to Hudson Drive. And so, you know, that presumably would, you know, even if there wasn't an express prohibition, you know, that would really prevent people from continuing down Tannery because you wouldn't really want to, there'd be no reason to.
Right, there is a paper wrote there now, I believe.
Correct, no, they're, correct. And now that, that, that gravel facility is, is finished up and, 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 you know, that area has been so that's, that's being looked at now. So that, but that's, you know, it's not something that you can really count on as, as definite, but it, at least is in the, in the discussion.
I see. Okay, well, signs will be good in the meantime.
Yeah, and I, you know, I mean, it's a fair point. I don't know enforcement, I, I don't, I don't quite know. I mean, I think you have to take, you know, the representations of, of the applicant and, and, you know, maybe they, I mean, if they're the ones controlling the trucks, you know, whether it's a condition and a permit or whether it's a, you know, just the good faith that you're going to do this or whether there's signs that say, you know, trucks go, you know, 10 and 202. You know, I'm not sure that, I, I honestly don't know. I have to think through what the enforcement would be and, and how that's, you know, put into play. But, you know, you would hope as, if, if the applicant is saying that's what they're going to do, that, that, you know, if they have control of it, they, that's their intention. At least until, unless there's some other way, you know, like I said, where Sam West connects and, and that becomes, you know, a viable op, option.
Right, that would empty into the industrial park, which would be more appropriate.
Correct.
Can I, I, I interject a question? If, would the police be having to say in studying the road and the safety of the travel that's going on currently? I mean, they could make a bundle just sitting on Tannery Road and any given day catching people flying. And, and it's just amazing how fast they go. It just would be something to also, I think, study how much traffic. And then the other point, Jen, Jessica, you had said earlier, I thought, maybe I didn't have it, the shifts were 6:00 to 2:00 and 2:00 to 7:00. And then you said 6:00 to 2:00 and 2:30 to 10:30, so.
Yes, I was incorrect the first time. So this might, the, the, the second is, is from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM is the first shift. And the second shift is from 2:30 to 10:30 PM.
So people, so employees will be leaving at 10:30, which is off-hours, but it is late at night going up and likely, you know, if they're living nearby, they're going to be going up and down Tannery. So I mean, you're not going to stop that traffic because they're going to work. That's a high volume, could be very high volume, just a concern. And again, going back to the police, considering, having some say on that, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, any other board or town official comments or questions before we wrap this up and continue it on? All right. So we are going to, we had slotted this one, hold on, let me pull this up. So on June 29th, it left a spot for 8:00 PM for this. So do I hear a motion to continue this to 8:00 PM on June 29th?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
All right. So this will go 8:00 PM on June 29th. You know, and we'll, we'll get the remainder of the presentation with the changes from DPW and then go from there. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael, one question, Michael, one question. Is the, when do the meetings go back to the town hall or do they still zoom up to a certain point?
It's a good question, Sue. I honestly haven't looked, and maybe Doug can fill us in about the legislation and whether it's passed or not. But there was legislation put forth to extend Zoom access for, for town boards to September 1, I think. But otherwise, it would expire on June 15th. So I don't know the status of it currently. Doug, do you know where that stands?
You nailed it. We're kind of in a state of flux. The governor's order ends on around June 15th. But there's been an extension and there's going to be some legislation coming, and we're looking at it closely. We want to get back to having in-person meetings sooner than later and, but still offer the ability for people to call into the meeting if they so wish. But we have to make sure that we are able to comply with the open meeting law. And it's going to depend on that legislation, whether board members are able to participate remotely or not. So we're still a couple of weeks out from having clarity on that, Sue. So bear with us, we'll be communicating with that. And we met last night at the Board of Selectmen, talked about this very issue. And the only thing we could agree to, to tell everyone is that we're going to communicate to all the boards and commissions what we can and can't be doing because we don't want to run afoul of that. And, you know, we're trying to keep all of these meetings as open as and transparent as possible. So we will communicate what those are. And if there's any transition, it'll be within the, you know, the valid posting period. So, you know, we're not going to have suddenly, hey, the meeting's at town hall, but, you know, we're not doing the Zoom thing tonight, sorry. Right, we're going to have that communication out there for everyone.
I think you're on mute there, so.
Sorry, thank you very much, Doug.
No problem.
And Mike.
Yeah, so we'll try to keep, you know, when we, obviously when we post the agenda, you know, and I will try to post it to Facebook as well, you know, let you know where things stand, you know, when we, when we get that information. So. All right. Anything else that we need to discuss, board members? Okay, Mr. Sutton, is he still on? Yeah, he is.
Make the motion to close the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
I think Richard said aye, I'm not sure, I couldn't read his lips, he's muted.
Yeah, you're on mute there, Dick.
Aye.
All right.
Doug, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
All right. We will see you on June 29th.
Carry on.
Have a good evening.
See you.
Thanks, everybody.